All right, we have a call. Next item is election of officers. Need a nomination for chairman?
Second.
Roll call? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I I accept. All right, uh, second is, uh, vice chair for 2022. Need a nomination?
I nominate Mr. Potter.
This is a joke.
Do I have a second? Roll call? Aye.
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 Sting.
All right. Congratulations, I hope you accept the position.
Acid reflux on back.
You have experience as a former congressman. All right, next item is acceptance of tonight's agenda. I've asked Mary Beth to, under new business, talk about the comprehensive plan meeting we have coming up on Tuesday, February 1st under new business. Any other additions or corrections? All right, we'll move forward with that, uh, one addition. Uh, next item is approval of the minutes, uh, from the December 16th, 2021 meeting. Any, uh, additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Roll call? Aye.
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 All right, minutes are approved. Uh, next item is public comments for any item that is not on the agenda tonight. Um, if it, if you have comments for something that is on the agenda tonight, we'll ask you to hold your comments until we get to each item so we can take those in context. When you do come forward, we'll have you state your name and address and let me hear comments for three minutes or less. Uh, at this time, are there any public comments for any item that is not on the agenda tonight under, uh, under public hearings, which everything tonight is a public hearing? All right, seeing that there are none, we'll move forward and open the public hearing. Uh, first item is, uh, Royal Drive Warehouse at Arlington Park, certified plat for three industrial lots on 27.85 acres is the applicant here and wish to address the commission. All right, Johnny?
This property is, uh, currently two lots. It's just south of, uh, where Bradford Station is now. Uh, so it's, uh, zone M1, and it's, uh, going to be divided into three lots, uh, at, uh, with lot sizes, industrial lots with lot sizes ranging from eight, 1.82 acres to 9.64 acres. Um, and, uh, just a little background, uh, just real quickly, uh, there's a, if you noticed the 60-foot strip there to the west, that's the extension, that's right away the city now owns, and that will be the extension of, uh,
Kaiser.
West Chester, and it'll go up and intersect with Kaiser up, up in Bradford Sta- uh, Bradford Station. Uh, there's a vacation easement, uh, application that is, uh, going to be on the, uh, 28th, uh, February agenda for the vacate easement that's running, uh, property line now, the two, of the two lots, to get rid of that since the property line's been, gonna disappear as well. But, uh, we would recommend approval with, uh, just signatures.
All right, this point, we'll open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, uh, First Plaza Arlington Park, certified plat for three commercial lots on 3.33 acres. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right, Johnny?
This is not too far from our other, just last project. Uh, this is, uh, just off of, um, uh, Arlington, uh, Drive, and it's just a little bit south of West Dublin. If you know where that is, it's currently one lot, uh, and it's on B3, and, uh, they're wanting to, uh, subdivide that into three lots. Uh, lots one and two have, uh, shared access. Lot three will have their own access. Um, and, uh, we recommend approval with, uh, just these two signatures we need.
All right, thank you. Open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, re-subdivision of Lot 1 Asbury, Ashbury, Phase 8, certified plat for two commercial lots on 2.51 acres. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission? Okay, I'll let Johnny in, I appreciate that. Tell him thank you for staying home.
And this property is on County Line Road. It's just a little bit south of New Bristol Drive. Um, and, uh, they're dividing out, uh, this into two commercial lots, and, um, get over to the plat, two commercial lots, uh, and, uh, it is going to be associated with a, uh, administrative site plan. We have, uh, review, we're reviewing, a tech review, uh, for dental office on the, uh, southernmost lot, and, um, uh, the other, uh, actions that are going on with this is there is a, uh, uh, vacation easement, um, request that's, that's going through. Uh, there's a six, there's a 70-foot utility drainage easement on the south end of Lot 1B. That is original detention. That is gonna be moved to the west or the back of the lot, and, um, it'll, uh, basically it'll move from one, the south property line to the west property line. I believe that's through engineering, and, uh, all their comments have been satisfied on this, so that should go through with no problem, and, uh, we recommend approval. We need a title opinion and signatures, but other than that, uh, it's clean. Now, we have one, we do have one engineering comment, and that may be resolved on the original you gave me. Uh, engineering had, um, they wanted, uh, revise call from, uh, point of commencement to point, point of beginning. But that should be clean, because I have the original over here, but we'll leave it on here, uh, for, for y'all to include in the motion. First, yes. Yes, and then it got subdivided, and then it got combined back together, and now it's been subdivided again, if I'm not mistaken. No Bojangles.
Oh darn.
All right, we'll open up for, open up for public comments. Comments from the commission?
I got one. Can you, uh, explain the access in and out of these two lots? Are they both gonna open up on County Line Road? We're gonna have a single point?
That's the ingress, egress easement?
Both lots.
Both lots, and, uh, your access will be New Bristol, up, uh, on the property just north of this, and that's where you would come into this site, uh, and it would allow you, there'll be no access for any of the lots down to New Bristol.
Okay.
Uh, except for, uh, except for New Bristol. That doesn't go all the way up to New Bristol. There is a lot above that. Okay, there will be one county line, yes, I'm sorry.
It'll just be a right out there. It won't be a, okay.
That was right in and right out? I believe so, yes. Yeah, you're right. There, there is one going directly into county line, and then, and then, uh, there is one at, uh, at the main dri- uh,
Okay, so nobody's gonna be hooking the left coming out of that point, okay. There we go. Move to approve, subject to comment.
Roll call? Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Next item is Bradford Station, Phase 1, final plat for 50 lots on 124.37 acres. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission?
Uh, Robbie Stewart with Mullins Engineering, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Johnny?
And we're kind of right back where we started. We started with the lot south of Bradford Station, and now we, we're at Bradford Station, so, uh, uh, we're looking at a final plat here, and, uh, we're gonna start right here, and, uh, a final plat for 50 lots on 124.37 acres. And I wanna go through, um, I wanna go through, uh, real quickly some of this. Uh, the city council approved a development agreement for the project on, uh, June 24th, uh, 2019, um, and, uh, the planning commission approved the preliminary plat, uh, for Phase 1 on, uh, May 21st, 2020, uh, and, uh, along with that, uh, CCNRs, uh, they were submitted to staff for review and approval, uh, at least 60 days prior to the final plat. We have those in-house and they're under review. Um, uh, submit architectural plans for buildings to planning commission for approval. That's something you approve tonight, and they're in your packet, and they're on the screen as well. Uh, and, uh, plans that demonstrate, uh, uh, these plans demonstrate attractive facade, uh, and no, uh, habitable second floor areas. Um, uh, they, uh, submit, uh, have to submit an amenities plan for recreation, and you approve that also tonight, and you have that in your packet. It's a, basically to, uh, make, ensure that, uh, the amenities do not include playground equipment, uh, in, in this subdivision. Um, the DA requires also, uh, certain improvements to be completed during the build-out of Phase 1. A landscape buffer must be constructed along the right-of-way. That's in process. Uh, a berm is in place, and landscaping will be planted in the spring. Uh, streetlights must be installed. That's in, uh, progress. The pedestals have been installed, and the transporter, transformers have been ordered. It's my understanding that there's a great backlog in transformers right now, uh, but we have that bonded, so, uh, we're good with that. Right-of-way easements must be acquired for the extension of Kaiser Boulevard to, uh, West Chester Drive. Complete right-of-way easements have been conveyed by, uh, deed to the, uh, City of Madison, warranty deed, so we have that to property for right-of-way. Uh, prior to the recording of Phase 1, the developer must provide the city with public, uh, access easement and, uh, uh, conservation easements for green space. Developer dedicates the floodway to the city for, uh, warranty deed. Uh, developer shall dedicate the greenway to the city. Items 1 and 3 are depicted on the final plat, uh, and will be dedicated with the plat, and later, uh, accepted by the city council. Um, and, uh, item 2 will be by warranty deed to the city before the recording. Um, uh, you see the, um, you see the, the floor plans and the architectural plans. That's hard to see on this, but you, you have a close-up of those. Uh, brick, I believe, is, uh, one of the, one of the main, uh, features of the elevations, which is good. Um, and, uh, we also, this is the, uh, recreation plan, uh, for the Cabana and Pooh. And, uh, we recommend approval. Uh, they do la- uh, label their green space. I just want them to add the words, uh, public access, and, uh, we have signatures, and then engineering will need performance bonds and add location for street name changes. Also, we had a letter from a Mr. McMurtry, who was, uh, owns Eagle Point Apartments, uh, and he, uh, called or emailed about concerns with drainage, uh, onto his property, and Morgan, uh, our hydrologist and engineer on staff in the engineering department, uh, wrote him back, and you see his response, and he basically said that the water was going the other way from this. So, you have his, you have his e- email, and then you have engineering's response, uh, to his email.
All right. Thank you. At this point, we'll open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission? Johnny, I have one I hate for you to come back up, but, uh, greenway, I, as part of the agreement, there was a greenway that was gonna go east-west along Kaiser. Is that part of this phase or later? Third phase, the greenway, okay. Not relevant at this time, okay. Thank you. Any comments from the commission?
Move to approve, subject to comments.
Oh, I apologize.
Oh, kind of architecture plans, sorry about that.
All right, so we need a motion on the approval of the architecture plans?
Move to approve the architecture plans.
Second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Need a motion on approval of the recreation plan?
Move to approve the recreation plan.
Second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 All right.
All right, motion approved. Last, uh, motion I need is on the final plat.
Move to approve final plat, subject to comments.
Second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Village at Oakland Springs Layout Plan amended for 36.06 acres. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission?
Thank you. Russ Roberts with Ridgewood Engineering. I think we've got a short presentation here. Presentation. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Todd Sloman to start.
All right, thanks. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Todd Sloman. Uh, my brother David and I are the developers of the Village at Oakland Springs. Um, we appreciate you, uh, allowing us to come tonight and, and present this project. Um, overall, the Village at Oakland Springs is well underway. Uh, as you know, the, the single family is well underway, and we also have started, uh, two different product types in the town center, uh, which will present, uh, retail opportunities, uh, about 15,000 square foot in the apartment, uh, complex, and, uh, another, uh, we've also have, I think it's, it's, right, uh, live works under construction, which are two different product types within the town center. So, that's well underway. We, we, we are moving forward with that. Um, the, uh, um, as you know, we've always said the market will, will guide us in, in, in many different aspects that create the... Thanks.
All right.
Uh, as you know, we, we've always said that the market will, will, will guide us in, in the many different aspects that create the final makeup of the community, which is why our original, uh, city approval allowed for many different product types throughout the community. Uh, this project is one, one more step in that process, and will be tremendous asset to both the City of Madison and the Village of Oakland Springs. Um, our partner in this project is a perfect fit. They've experienced with traditional neighborhoods, and our, uh, interests are aligned, since David and I are also, uh, large, uh, investors in this project, because we don't just develop the projects, we actually take, uh, long-term stakes in the things that we bring in. So, we're very particular about who we bring in and why we bring them in, and we wanna make sure that they fit in with the community overall before we, uh, decide to go forward with, with this type of thing. So, we're not just selling dirt here, we're actually investors in the project. Um, this project brings many positives to, to the Village of Oakland Springs. It brings additional rooftops, which help support not only the commercial that's currently under construction in the town center that I referenced earlier, but it will also support the construction that we show on, on the drawing that you see, and allow us to bring that commercial in, uh, immediately as well. That is not gonna be a delayed start. We'll start that with the overall project. Um, the, uh, the architecture, of course, is in keeping with, uh, everything else that we do in the Village of Oakland Springs. I'm sure you're aware that, that we're very particular on, on architecture, and, and that will be the case with this as well. Um, this brings connectivity both on the north, the south, and the east side of the project, which, uh, which opens up the access to all the housing to the south of the Village of Oakland Springs, which brings additional traffic into the town center, uh, to help support those businesses that we're trying to attract, and will help with, help us in the future to put additional, uh, retail in the town center, so we can grow that town center and continue to provide the tax dollars to the city. Um, it, uh, to talk a little about the project directly, it's very pedestrian-friendly, with dedicated green spaces and amenities that encourage a sense of community in place, which is in keeping with everything else in the Village of Oakland Springs, with o- open access to all the housing, uh, to the south, and, and all that sort of thing like we talked about. All these things point to Capstone as a perfect partner, which is why I now wanna turn the mic over to Jim, and he'll go further into the, into the details of the project itself.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate that. Um, I'm Jim Beatty, and I'm here to represent Capstone Communities out of Birmingham tonight. Um, I apologize, the slides are behind you guys, but from time to time...
We can see them.
Soon there, okay, well there you go.
Perfect, mine is.
All right. Uh, again, um, so I'll go through a couple of these slides, and then I'll turn it over to Niket, but we do appreciate your time. We're really excited. Like Todd said, um, Capstone is to be working with he and David on this project. Um, I think our visions are aligned for Oakland Springs, and makes it even more exciting, um, working with people that have the same goal in mind. Um, I'm gonna give you a brief history of Capstone tonight, then I'm gonna tell you a little bit about, um, the cottage communities themselves, kinda who, who we envision will be living in these communities, um, and then, more specifically, what we have planned at Oakland Springs. Then I'll turn it over to Eric Wadsworth with, uh, Niket Architecture, and he can tell you a little bit more detail about the actual cottages and some of the specific designs, and then he has a short video we can watch, and then I'll wrap things up, um, before the staff report's read. So, just real quick, um, let's figure this out to work. Um, as I mentioned, Capstone is based out of Birmingham, Alabama. We've got over 20 years of experience. We've developed over 118 different communities, 31 different states. The slide you're looking at kinda points to a lot of these different states and communities we've developed. Uh, we have a, uh, history of, uh, being student housing developers, um, but that's not all we do. We, you know, we develop multifamily, whether it's cottage, whether it's mixed use, we do a lot of different things, so, um, with that, um, I'd also like to point out that Capstone is vertically integrated. We have our own development company. We have our construction company in-house that will construct this property, and then we have our own management company that will see this through from daily activities to 24/7 maintenance, so, all of that'll be handled in-house. Um, so now I'll go into a little bit about actually what defines a cottage community and who we expect will live here. That I'll put it on the site plan while I go through this, but, um, Todd, Todd touched on this a little bit, but a cottage community is really a low-density, multifamily neighborhood that incorporates a lot of sidewalks, outdoor space, pedestrian-friendly amenities, and it really does create a true sense of, sense of community. So, um, the cottages, the cottages themselves, um, are private, standalone, and twin homes, and with that, you'd have private cottage, or you might have a twin home where you, your front doors would not be face-to-face like you would envision in like a duplex, but from the street and from walking the neighborhood, you would think that these are standalone homes on their own. But all the homes would have their own private backyard as well. They have, Eric will go into more detail about the vaulted ceilings and windows, but they really do live a lot bigger than they are. Um, within these, uh, communities, we feel like we've got three target markets. You've got your young professionals, you've got your empty nesters, and you've got your transfer residents. Um, the transfer residents, just people that may be feeling out Oakland Springs or Madison before purchasing a home. But of these three, uh, primary demographics, we really feel like these cottages are designed, um, for the young professionals. Um, you know, again, mentioning that we've developed a lot of student housing over the years. Um, students that are, or students that may have chose to live in one of our, um, cottage communities in college, might get out of college, and they don't wanna go live in a three-story walk-up apartment, um, or they might not have the funds set aside yet to purchase a home. So, we feel like this gives, um, these, uh, young professionals, you know, a choice that may not have existed up until now. Um, before, you either owned a home, like I said, or maybe it was you were looking for a, you know, one-to-two-bedroom apartment in a three-story walk-up. And there's nothing wrong with a three-story walk-up, but, you know, as we've all seen throughout COVID, um, things have really been accelerated. A lot of people are working at home. A lot of people are spending more time at home, so this kind of allows them a place with no one above or below them to spread out, and then they've got their private yard, they can spend time outside. So, at Oakland Springs, um, we're proposing 300 of these cottage units, along with 8,000 square feet of retail and commercial that Todd mentioned, and these will happen at the same time, so this is all part of one project. Um, again, this is gonna look and feel like a residential neighborhood, but it is, you know, in simplest terms, a horizontal apartment community. Um, we expect this community's gonna attract some high-income, um, earning residents, uh, to Oakland Springs that will ultimately make the town center and the commercial vibrant. Uh, the cottages themselves are primarily one, two, and three-bedroom units. Uh, one and two-bedroom units make up about 86% of the property themselves, and those one and two bedrooms, on average, are less than, I think it's, um, I've got less than 900 square feet. So, if you take a look at that from kind of a, a high level, you'll see that these are really not targeted for families with school-aged children, but for more of these young professionals, empty nesters who, hey, I wanna downsize, but I've never really seen myself selling my home and moving into apartment, but I could see myself possibly entertaining the idea of living in a small cottage. So, just based on the data from our other communities across the southeast, we're seeing about 90% of our total households are one to two people, uh, per, per unit. So, hopefully that gives you a little bit of a broader idea of, uh, what it is that we're looking to bring to Oakland Springs, and this time I'll turn it over to Eric Wadsworth with Niket, and he can talk a little more in detail about the design.
Thank you, Jim. I'm Eric Wadsworth, principal architect and land planner at Niket Architecture and Design, also in Birmingham, Alabama. Uh, our fa- our practice focuses on traditional neighborhood designs, um, and, uh, that's very similar to Capstone, very similar to the Sloman Brothers. Uh, it's been a great experience so far working on this project. Um, as Jim mentioned, the development here has one- and two-story cottages, mostly one and two bedrooms with a small handful of three-bedrooms, um, one and two units per dwelling for the mu- or, per, rebuilding for the most part, um, as Jim mentioned. Also, the square footages lend themselves to the young professional demograph- demographic, and also the empty nesters. Um, the site planning itself is based on traditional neighborhood principles. Instead of parking lots, we have the network of streets and alleys that you see. Um, the streets have sidewalks, trees, the traditional sidewalk lighting down the, down the streets. And the site, and we also provide, unlike a lot of neighborhoods, you can see up the center of the site, uh, a network of pocket parks and sidewalks that connect all the units to the, sorry, to the amenities without having to go, uh, down the streets, if that's the choice. Um, access to the site is, um, plentiful. We have access to the north through the retail site to Huntsville Browns Ferry Road East. We're proposing a connection to, uh, between our cottage site and the retail to future development there. South to Trails End, uh, or a street called Trails End, and the Nature's Trail subdivision, and west, pedestrian connection to the rest of Oakland Springs. We have a few samples of the representative cottages here to talk about. The actual development has a lot more variety than what we're gonna show right now, just to give you a flavor of what there is. Uh, these cottages, you see one of the examples on the screen, Slavon Grade Foundation- These cottages, you see one of the examples on the screen, slab-on-grade foundations, fiber cement siding, ornamental detailing and brackets that you see made out of wood, dimensional shingle roof. And all of the cottages have three to four sides of windows, depending on whether you have a twin home or a standalone unit. All of the cottages are built in a traditional American vernacular style, inspired by pre-World War II bungalows that you see built all over the country in more traditional neighborhoods. These photos are from the cottages of Old Monrovia, which you may be familiar with, in Huntsville. So all of these are the same product that we're talking about for here. All of the units have their own front porches and their own backyards. And then there's, to give you an idea of some of the variety, you see the large picture here is our, one of our one-bedroom cottages. In the lower-left corner, you see two different elevations of the same cottage. So when you look at the site plan, it may look like a lot of the same things everywhere. When you're standing on the sidewalk, it's going to be a lot of variety of what you're looking at. Another example product here is the two-bed townhouse. On this product, or in this project in Oakland Springs, we're only going to use it in the duplex form like what you see there, not connected more, and more of a townhouse, longer townhouse configuration. And then here is the three-bed cottage. This is a, you see the full-height front balcony, the full front porch underneath, and then it also has its own private backyard. So we use this unit around the site to help frame some of the pocket parks, help terminate views at the end of streets, gives it more of a, a little bit more of a southern flavor to, I think, to the overall site. I'm trying to move a little bit fast. I know we'll have questions, time for questions after. The units have a lot of features that are not typical to the multifamily market. We'll get into a lot of it in the video too. You'll see a lot more pictures of some of these items, a lot more videos. The full spectrum of amenities that you see here is targeted at the young professional market. The finishes are better than most multifamily offerings. In particular, the smart home technology package is offered and provided in every unit that includes smart thermostat, the ring doorbell or some sort of video doorbell, and network connectivity, the smart home control panel, you know, controls some of the home features and all of that sort of thing. All of the units, of course, being built on the ground floor, we have vaulted ceilings and like Jim mentioned, they all live quite a bit larger than they are. Community amenities in general, you also see a lot of pictures of this when we get to the video. Professional onsite management is one of the features that Jim didn't quite talk about, but you have 24/7 support from onsite staff, a clubhouse that has a full fitness center and a pool, leasing office, sports spaces, package delivery lockers, and package service. And I think we can move now to, I think I've covered everything there. We can move to the video portion if that's okay.
While we're waiting for the video, you said this property will have a pool?
Yes, sir.
It'll have its own pool?
Okay. Okay. I hope you're all inspired by the music.
I was going to get up on the table and start dancing.
What I hope that you got out of that video is the character of the neighborhood, especially when you're on street level, and the way that we have strove to make everything feel when you were in the neighborhood, that it feels like it's on place, you have a sense of community, a sense of intentionality with the design. Is there any questions before I sit down?
I think at this point we'll let staff do their presentation and I'll open up for public comments and then we'll probably come back and answer some questions, but we'll follow the process here. Johnny, I'll let you do the staff presentation.
I'm not going to try to add a lot to what they've said, just that, that what they're wanting to do is consistent with the mixed residential area classification, that you see those sub-classifications in the TND. And it is consistent with our master plans, the West Side Master Plan, the place types, and the transportation plan. It calls for a Greenway down the, down Oakland Springs branch. Part of this, they didn't mention part of this will, project will be to grade the west side, I believe it's the west side of Oakland Springs branch, to grade that for the Greenway that'll go down that branch. East side, I'm sorry, east side. Yes. Right. With that, we do recommend approval. We do have three contingencies. The site assessment's under review and we have two other engineering comments. Well, one is the site assessment that will overlay the new layout and you, Corps of Engineer Determination on Jurisdictional Strengths.
All right. Thanks, Johnny. This time I'll open up for public comments. All right, seeing that there are none comments from the commission.
The amenities, are they going to be open to everybody in Oakland Springs or just this community? Just, so you're basically going to have communities within your community?
Well, so there's a, there's a main clubhouse that's being built as a part of phase two for the other parts of residential community, and then the, then the residential apartments, the Argento apartments, they have their own set of amenities for their residents, and then again, this side of the street will have their own.
So everybody will do their own kind of thing? Okay. Cool.
I have some comments I'd like to make about this project.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I did a lot of digging because I wasn't on the planning commission in 2014 when the first layout was approved and this project was brought to the city. I was on the school board and I definitely remember a lot of excitement about Madison is getting their own Providence. And it was very exciting, it is very exciting, that we're going to have the Village of Oakland Springs. So I remember that from the school board side and having certain concerns about where the students would go to school. And I believe that, I don't know if it was you, Mr. Slimon, or your brother, who actually met with some school board people and discussed, you know, about the students going to Bob Jones. And, you know, there was just a lot of excitement about that project. And originally, the layout was for 345 residential lots, but very quickly in January 2015, they approved a new, the planning commission and city council approved a new layout for 521 lots. And since then, and I just, this is just from looking on our website and double-checking with Johnny and Mary Beth, so I hope they'll correct me if I've left out anything, but in 2016, you had the final plaque for Phase One, and it said on the staff report that was 100 lots. I assume those were traditional single-family homes. I don't really know, I couldn't tell from the...
Some of that's in the works.
Okay. Okay. Right. So there were 100 lots. And then in 2020, there was a preliminary plaque for Phase Two, and that looked like that was on the western side of the property, for 79 lots. 19 were attached, single-family lots, but there are 79 total lots. And then in May of 2020, there was the Argento, is it Argento Project? Right. With 264 apartments and 10,000 square feet of commercial tenant space?
17,000.
Okay. The report said 10,000, but anyway.
We're actually.
I did ask our staff if there were any commercial properties open at this time in the development, and they said that there's nothing open at this time, this commercial, is that correct? Right? So I generally have the feeling that it's, for me, it's definitely a lot slower to develop than I had expected, given that the first presentations were in 2014. But anyway, it seems to be moving along. I did notice that in the original description of the TND zoning, which is traditional neighborhood district, the original description of that, the mixed residential part was for single-family attached, neighborhood center area with commercial on the first floor and residential above. And then they had something called the neighborhood edge area for single-family detached. Now, in 2018, the planning commission updated TND to allow apartments, okay? And as far as I know, the only other TND is Town Madison. And we've certainly put a lot of apartment, we've certainly approved a lot of apartments, like 1,500 apartments in Town Madison. And so that's just kind of the history of the development there. I definitely don't see this project as something that's consistent with the original thought about Village of Oakland Springs, but I realize that things can change over time. My main concern is that the West Side Master Plan calls for this to be a town center in PNA, Parks and Natural Area. And so originally, that part that we're discussing tonight was supposed to be 82 residential lots, spread over 36 acres, with five acres of that being commercial. And so now, so when you think about that property and the PNA designation, 82 homes over 36 acres, pretty spread out, you could see that that could have a little bit of a green area, you know, it could, it could look like Parks and Natural Area if you have large lots and a lot of the trees were kept and that kind of thing. So now what we're talking about is putting 300 residential places. And I noticed that on that 36 acres, they have .95 acres dedicated to open space. .95, that's less than 3% of the property. And to compare that to some of the things that we have recently approved, such as Bella Woods and Creekside, Bella Woods had, it was a residential cluster in an area that was PNA, but they worked with us and they actually had a 28% set aside for open space. And Creekside, also one of these R2 clusters, had a 33% set aside on 20 acres. And so my concern is we are losing a tremendous amount of green space, Parks and Natural Area space, going from 82 residential lots to 300 duplexes and a few, you know, detached homes. I feel like that is not at all in character with the land use according to the West Side Master Plan. Honestly, I feel like if we're going to be approving this, there should be an amendment to the West Side Master Plan because I don't feel like Parks and Natural Area is at all consistent with 300 duplexes. So I, in fact, I look back to see, are we also changing the West Side Master Plan? I think that the pictures in the video you showed us, I don't have any complaints at all about the architecture. I think they look nice. I think the amenities are nice. I just don't think that .95 acres of green space out of 36 acres is sufficient for that property.
Yeah, probably get you on the mic here so we can record the minutes.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can't speak to the specifics for the open space. I'd have to rely on...
Well, our staff report says .95 acres out of 36 acres is open.
Sure. But each one of these individual units would have their own private backyard, which is, you know, in a sense, open space. So that, you know, when you factor in 300 units with their private backyards, you know, that tends to take up a lot of space that could have been, you know, more pocket parks. But we feel like, you know, what we've seen from residents in our other communities, that they really enjoy having the privacy of a private backyard, you know, in exchange, you know, for more, you know, open green space, which we will have these pocket parks throughout. And then the connectivity too, I mean, will be open. So, you know, we're not getting this community. So, you know, we almost see this as a total amenity to Oakland Springs so that, you know, people can walk through and get to the retail and, you know, people that are at the retail commercial area, you know, running our site can then walk and take the pedestrian access over to the town center. So, you know, we really encourage, you know...
But the commercial area is at the north part, right? So that, I mean, there was access to that even on the, on the original layout?
And I really just wanted to touch on the private backyards more than anything, just about open space. Hopefully that helps to explain that a little bit, how we utilize a lot of that land for that, so.
I'd have to look at the... Yeah, 100 seconds.
Can we look at the site plan itself versus the figure of the site plan? That's on the present, for the presentation?
Yes.
And just, this will not include...
Yeah, if we can turn the mic then the...
Just to be clear, this does not include the Greenway area that's along the creek, on both sides. And then we've also got, you know, if you look at the overall of the Village of Oakland Springs, they also have the large lake that we put just south of the, so when you come into the neighborhood, you drive south, the large lake there with green space all around the lake that's going to have walkways and everything. We're in the process right now of, we're in for the permit right now for the clubhouse that's going to be on the west side of that lake. And when we build that clubhouse, we'll also put all the walkways and everything around that lake, tie all that together and get the waterfall and everything running on the, on the, in the lake, going from the upper lake to the lower lake. And so, I mean, but overall, what happens is you end up with green space throughout the entire community. So it's, it's hard to take just one section of the community and say, okay, well, out of this section, you only have this much green space. When you have to look, to me, you have to look at the overall of the entire community. That's just the way these communities grow. And we, and we always intentionally put, for instance, in Phase Two, you'll notice that across from the townhouses, there's, the reason the townhouses are located where they're located is because there's also a large park that's in between there that's across from the clubhouse. So we, it's very intentional on where we put the green spaces and everything according to the housing types.
Yeah, I was going to ask staff the same question about how the Greenway factored into the green space, but...
I wanted to put this slide on the screen again, just to show how much green there is on this slide. Besides some small patios in the backyards, this is an accurate representation of what would be open space, green space in the development. So while the pocket parks themselves may, I question the .95 acres because intuitively, the two parks even just on the south end seem like they're larger than that.
Well, I thought that too, and then I looked at the thing and it said they were detention pines. ponds, what's covered, colored green is what it said. It says on our, on our layout, detention pond, because when I saw that, I thought the same thing, but...
Do you mean the park, right?
I, I mean, I, I only know what our staff has in the report, which says point ninety-five acres of green space, so I don't know what the staff wants to...
I didn't include the detention pond, uh, pond, uh...
Right, 'cause that's not...
...detention or retention. While I was doing the report, I talked to James, and he said he thought there were going to be detention. That's not necessarily a park, 'cause sometimes they're a bowl. So I just added up the five parks that were on the, uh, sketch flat and had an acreage zone, so I just added them up, that was it.
Right.
We did not, anyway, in terms of the line of twenty, um, and it could be a project that we intend to, um, you know, you know, those areas that they used for being made up ultimately dedicated to the city, that should be counted, you know, as part of that open space, and we didn't, we didn't raise that, that, although we did in case they were gonna be, you know, raising it.
Uh-huh.
So I got a different question. We've deleted the bridge that was planned between the two, the left and the east and west sides, what was the thought behind deleting the bridge?
So originally, when we came in with the design for the project, the city wanted to install a bridge, uh, from the east side to the west side. Um, since then, I'm not sure what happened with the culverts, but the culverts somehow disappeared, so, so did the bridge. So the city was gonna be installing that bridge.
The city was gonna install that bridge, is that...
I think Jerry had a bunch of culverts that he was trying to use up, and we got, they found places along the way, and he can, there's other places we wound up using them.
Jerry just thought we had them, and they were on a yard somewhere, and it was data out of them, um, and we cut them, and, and as Mr. Slime was saying, that was, that was the way the guy was told by the city would be providing them, and then either culverts ended up not being the right size, or they were no longer usable, but they didn't become, um, available. So we, we have talked with, um, so we, um, we had talked with, um, developers about keeping that, that we could propagate and putting in the bridge, um, and their response was, you know, the city wasn't gonna be able to assist in that from a financial standpoint, that they'd be willing to, well, 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 low water property, so during low water testing, it would be able to propagate. We missed that.
Okay.
There is, uh, that, that seems determined now based on the concrete rates and, and some of the flood rate and all that, so that's under stuff right now, that's what that...
Um, critical, but so in that entire length of property, there's only one crossing from the east to west.
Okay.
Yeah. Put, put that to the on...
Well, right, and then obviously there's a side walk along that's...
Yeah. So the issue here is, uh, making sure we don't raise water levels on the south, so it's very intensive engineering work, make sure we don't, uh, put it south.
And, and actually, um, current engineering staff, yeah, had expressed some concern that the bridge should go in without impacting, um, so there's some, from a floodwater perspective, it's not happening, that's probably why it's not happening.
Yeah, I didn't realize we were doing culverts, I was thinking something more like Wits and Providence, where it's an actual bridge with a Greenway underneath, but that's not what we were thinking, okay.
Could I, could I make one other comment? I, is that good?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, also, and this is sort of with, with my former school board hat on, um, as I said, I, I remember this project from, um, my days being on the school board, and we worked with Mr. Slime, or the other Mr. Slime, uh, and, and, um, you know, decided to zone, uh, this property is very far out west, and it's actually zoned for, I believe it's, uh, Rainbow, but I know for sure Bob Jones, right? And there was a conversation about that. I just wanna, um, mention this as well. Um, one of the, one of the priorities in zoning neighborhoods for schools in the city of Madison, uh, is that we wanted to keep all of our schools, um, as equal as possible. We didn't wanna have have and have-not schools, we didn't wanna have schools where all of the nice, big homes go to one school, and all of the duplexes and apartments go to the other school, right? Because we just, we wanna try to create, uh, economic parity between, uh, students as much as possible. And so, um, we knew that James Clemens could not hold all of the growth that's taking place out west, and so, from the school board side, we were extremely excited about the Village of Oakland Springs, because we felt like, knowing what Providence looks like, we felt like that would be, uh, more affluent community to help balance, that would be a new growth and a nice affluent community that would balance with all the communities that are being built on the west side in Limestone County, right? So we wanted Bob Jones to have some new growth and some, some, you know, higher income, uh, higher-priced homes go into it, because, you know, the east side is older, and homes are getting older, and there's, you know, more apartments on the east side and so forth. And so, part of the plan to, to zone that, I mean, as Robbie Parker used to say, I'm zoning dirt over here in Limestone County, uh, because we didn't have any homes there, but we had an idea and agreement of, and, and we had what the city council, I mean, what the planning commission had approved for this property. So in twenty fifteen, when the schools are making plans and trying to decide about high schools and zoning and all that, um, we are thinking five hundred and twenty-one family homes, and we knew there would be some apartments or residential above the businesses. So I'm just thinking, how, just from the school system side, how do you ever plan for things like this if you come back, you know, seven years later, and now it's three hundred duplexes instead of eighty-two nicer homes that we were expecting to balance out? So I know that's not the planning commission's job to solve the school system's problem, but I just, that's another part of my concern, is that it's very different than what the school system had planned for. So now Bob Jones is getting three hundred duplexes, and, and I know they're saying, not gonna be kids there, there're gonna be kids there, there're gonna be kids there, 'cause people are trying to get into Madison in any way, shape, form that they can. So, again, I just, I feel like this is not at all what this property was designed for. Doesn't really fit.
Any other comments on the commission?
The fifth one is, one, can you speak a little bit to the, the financing of, of how this enables or helps you from the commercial side, uh, maybe better working what they have before. Uh, and then two, I think directly to the, to Ms. Slime, is how can this product, and it's, uh, I guess maybe overall facade or overall kind of height, uh, property compare to what you have in Providence, and then maybe how you say, like, your improved or tech line in that area. I lived there with one, that was like nothing but trees.
Where?
I lived in the back, back, uh...
Okay.
Before, I was there before, I was there probably on Main Street, so...
Okay.
So, yeah, I lived with the whole address, I can say.
Back when it was Indian Creek Road?
Yes, so, um, so I guess it's one, kind of overall, the body of the side of what you can, you know, if that's what you can't...
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so...
So, so on the financial side, what you're referring to is, okay, um, what we're...
I was just still...
Right, so more rooftops equal, and, and the nice thing about these rooftops is, no, it's not gonna be a lot of kids, that's the whole reason for it. You can have young professionals that have, you know, they don't have kids sitting at home, so they have higher disposable income to go visit the restaurants and spend money in, in the town center businesses. When we try to attract the, um, the different things within the town center, first thing they're gonna, that they ask is, okay, what's the demographic, how many rooftops are, are within, you know, a certain radius, depending on who they, who it is, and, you know, what's our, you know, what does it look like as far as their ability to come out and spend money in our restaurant, or whatever, whatever the establishment might be. Um, and so, what this does for the community is it produces more rooftops and also makes that connection to the south that brings all those other rooftops that are further south, so they have direct access to get to our town center. So they'll be able to come to the, the east side of the town center and the west side of the town center, and, and, can't see it because we don't have the picture up there, but the idea is, we're gonna continue our town center as we continue to go west, that town center will continue down, down that way as well. So it may be more rooftops than what was originally planned, but the whole idea is, we're trying to build up enough rooftops so that we have a, a, a mass of people to be able to take care of that town center, which pays the taxes that pay into the, I mean, the whole idea is, we need the property taxes, I'm sorry, the, the, uh, sales taxes, is what the city lives on. And, well, that's what makes a vibrant community for us, is when we can get that town center, similar to when you, when you go through Providence now, it's completely different than what was originally, uh, thought of when we started the project. And that's because we continue to invest, like I told you, David and I invest in each one of these projects. We're not gonna bring anything in that is gonna be a detriment to us as we go further down the line, because we have a whole lot more to build out there. So, you know, we're gonna continue with more, and, and we hold these projects, we don't, we don't sell them off, we're not, we're not, you know, here to just, uh, you know, develop a neighborhood and, and boom, we're gone once the dirt's sold. We are investors in Argento, we're investors in the Capstone Project, we're investors in, in all of these projects, you know, that, that are there for the long term. So we wanna make sure that when we bring our tenants in, because we're the ones that do the lease-up for all the commercial space, trust me, Argento's is leaning on us for all of that, uh, because that's what we have experience doing. We pick out certain, uh, establishments that we wanna bring into our town center, so that number one, they're not competing against each other and driving the next guy out of business, so that we end up with an empty space, that doesn't help anybody. But we're also attracting all these people, certain people, so that we attract the community to come to our town centers to spend their money. Because let's face it, there's a lot of competition out there in different places, and it's just right up the road. So we wanna keep them right there in our community, so they spend their money right there in the community, and that helps everyone. And so, this project is in keeping with us, with the architecture throughout the community, they showed you the, the pictures of the bungalows and that sort of thing, all that's in keeping with everything we're doing. We, we're not gonna, you know, start changing our, our process because we wanna, you know, bring in different rooftops. They go through the same process everybody else goes through on getting everything approved through our process. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not, was, was there one?
The second one is, this project may be comparable or comparable to what you, maybe have in, uh, in Providence, I think, you know, to, you know, whether that continues to, to decline or decline in certain areas, I mean, um, I think the concern is, like, the amount or mix or, or type of property, um, and what that may or may not work.
The rents in here are much higher than what you think they are? I mean, we're, we're gonna be top of the market when it comes to rents, we're gonna, what, two dollars a foot is, is what the performance is?
We, we usually see, you know, for these, um, you know, for these, you know, twin homes and single-family cottages, you know, you can see between fifteen and twenty percent above your typical Class A, um, apartments, so, the ni, envision the nicest apartments in Madison, or the nicest apartments in Huntsville, and you can probably factor another fifteen, twenty percent above that, and the reason for that is, you don't have anyone above or below you, so you've got that sense of privacy, you've got your sense of an own, your own home, and then your private backyard, so it really truly is single-family living, rather than, you know, what most consider multi-family living, um, it just adds to your rent. Yep, so these are gonna attract the, you know, again, we, we say this, but we also see these results, these are gonna attract the, you know, you know, high-earning, young professionals, empty nesters, transfer residents, um, it, it's bringing the kind of people into Madison, into Oakland Springs that you are gonna wanna see, and this is gonna be something you can all be proud of, that, you know, we can be proud of, um, but, and then, but what you're not gonna see, and, you know, I know, you know, we talk about this, as of the homes, but you're really not gonna see an impact on school, because the, you know, the carriage houses themselves are one bedrooms, and those are about five hundred and sixty square feet. You can imagine, you're not gonna see a family living there, I mean, that's ideal for your, you know, dad or, um, or mom who may have taken a job with, uh, the FBI, and she's here three or four days a week before she goes back to Virginia, so that would be an ideal situation, um...
But the impact you will see on schools is the, is the additional property taxes that are paid, because this three-hundred unit community is in payout a heck of a lot more property taxes than the original, uh, the same eight, three...
Eighty-two.
Twice, you play twice the rate.
I mean, not twice the rate, but it's, it's, it's the value of the property, it's gonna be much higher than what the previous are.
I mean, that would definitely be true when they're brand new, um, twenty years down the road, at one time, Flagstone Apartments was the nicest apartment community in Madison, and so, def, I agree that they're gonna be high-rent and high-dollar and attract people, and when they're new, they're gonna do that, but twenty years down the road, we've got three hundred duplexes going to Bob Jones, so...
Well, one, one thing we've seen, um, and we have a property in Auburn called Creekside, and that's about twenty years old, and we actually take, um, investors like, um...
My daughter lives there.
Todd and David Slime, and, you know, to Creekside, to show them just that, that, hey, we developed this twenty years ago, and it's got the same cottage layout, um, you know, there's, you know, particular...
Still looks good, it's, it's been good building.
You got your sidewalks, streetscaves, amenities, and so, you know, we, we always use kind of the analogy when, you know, a plant dies in front of a resident's home, um, you know, they're going straight to the management office and they're saying, my plant's dead, um, because they're taking ownership in that, like it's a, a home, not just an apartment where I could leave, you know, and go find another one tomorrow, I mean, people really do, you know, you know, these, these are, you know, these developments, um, you know, we're creating a sense of place, it really is a community, um, that's gonna withstand, you know, the test of, um, and...
Very well maintained, and it's, it's not the same, it's not really the same.
I, I certainly believe that that is your intent, I certainly, I, I believe that that's your intent.
I, I follow that, I've changed my view on whether or not people need the city of Madison to go to school, 'cause they're building homes out west and outside the city limits, left and right, and they don't care if they're in the city limits, not having any problems selling, um, residential homes. Uh, the mayor's presentation a couple of councils ago laid out all the potential county properties that are said and look to develop, and, I mean, it's like, if you drive down Power Road, you know, right there, right behind your subdivision, there's a huge subdivision going in, and they made no effort at all to annex into the city, they don't care.
But they're gonna come spend their money.
They're gonna go, hopefully, hopefully, but, but I mean, I, I, I know that that's true, but it's, it's also not as absolute as it used to be.
Certainly.
And I think that's a function of the jobs going on, uh, and, and what's, what's being built that we have no control over, in North Alabama, that, uh, the, the industries and, and jobs are being created, people aren't gonna live here, and, and, um, you know, they'll take a decent school, and all the schools are quote decent, you know, ours are just bitter, so...
We, we expect about, you know, less than five percent impact on schools, so, I mean, that four and a half percent number that you see in your staff report, um, you know, is, is pretty accurate, so, again, with eighty-six percent of the units being one and two bedroom, um, less than nine hundred square feet, I mean, you can imagine, you know, it's, I live in a small carriage house in Birmingham, and, um, you know, you know, I, I can imagine something, you know, half the size of that, and trying to raise three kids, but it's, again, it's, it's not the demographic that we're planning to target, and, you know, our, our other projects across Southeast have kinda proven those, the young professionals, empty nesters, transfer...
Do we have any real data on Town Madison and your province they have over there?
They, um, I don't have specific numbers, I do know that there are some students, um, in the, what was called... I do know that there are some students in the, what was it, they should, now they're called, they're raised in the ballpark, out of that apartment complex. My sense would be a little transitional while they're being counted still. I, you know, we kind of surveyed them, but I know where, I told them the school bus doesn't stop there, that it may be that people are, the developers that the school bus doesn't maybe stop there, but I told them there are some students that are there and we can certainly get that information for you.
It'd be a good barometer just to see what's coming here, but...
Well, I mean, you know, we don't think they've ever claimed that there wouldn't be any students, how are men, because there's a reason that people may be waiting for out, people, and you could have single parents, couples, you know, in a two-bedroom, right? There's one parent or two children there, or two children sharing them. We've never claimed that, but I think what we've been casted is, and I just think general data shows that the type of apartment that we supported back have been millennials or even nothing else, because we've got people, the two men that that's back from, and doing our best to try and have these projects not be attracted to, you know, help. But there certainly are going to be, you know, and maybe that there will be families, you know, a couple that have young children that aren't in school yet, or maybe they're a senior, and then when they get a little older, they want a bigger house and so then they buy a house or they, you know, build up savings or they afford and they don't pay. So, is this possible, are you going to take them there?
(inaudible) having the commercial area where the residential is not necessarily on the backside of, you know, the, you know, the backside of, say, like public, right?
Parking out front with the strip center and that's not what we do.
Yeah, I mean, you know, with the residential down in the north, the north facing, you know, the house, it's all around, the facade facilitates and they kind of co, they're co-sensory needs, if one suffers or everyone suffers, or at some point, somebody revenue suffers, or something, there's a force of function there, like they help people out or have, how the apartments, if you've been loved, you put it on the side, the north side, the north side, wherever it's kind of like, but, you know, going around and also looking at what is being built, a lot of right now, I mean, right now, there's apartments going up everywhere. I'm not a listener, but I know more, I'm trying to control the town, there's a name and a written address, somebody is figuring out and it is, but policy seems to be now how you build it so that, you know, time will let us, we'll let, we'll not let, we'll have to come up with whatever, maybe not, but I think it's, I kind of like it, it's a thing where it's a lot of time, it's a lot of time, I think, I think, for you.
You can look at our projects, you know, we go with the long-term in mind. We don't build, we're not virgin builders. We do not build, we build old and we don't, we're going to have to, okay, we're not going to have a tenant actually because we can't, we're not going to do that. Otherwise, you know what? My kids don't eat. I'm the guy that has to take care of government when there's no tenant in the commercial buildings. We got to hate for that. When the rent stops, the mortgage keeps going.
When Mr. Beatty and the Slamans presented this to staff, we knew it would be, you know, a discussion topic and we spent quite a bit of time talking about it internally. And one of the, a couple of the things that we like about this is that we don't have this product type in Madison currently, other than if you have a regular or single-family neighborhood and somebody's renting out their house. And there's, you know, a bit of that that happens in Madison. You've got contract folks who they come in, they're, you know, they work for several years, they keep their house, then they move, but they're renting out their house. So, there's rental single-family throughout this community and in every community. So, we view this as, even though they are multi-family, they function like a single-family unit in terms of that pride of occupancy, I guess, that Mr. Beatty was referring to. But we like the fact, unlike in a subdivision where there might not be any kind of HOA, there's property management here to take care of these individual units. So, we liked that aspect. We like the fact that this is a new product type that we don't have in Madison. And from a public policy standpoint, one of the things we like to see is some differentiation in product because it allows you to address different parts of your demographics. So, your empty nester that, you know, I can envision, you know, you might have an older couple or an individual who no longer wants to take care of a house, but they want it, they're not ready to live in an apartment or senior living, and they want something like this. This is a perfect solution for them because they can have that independence, they can have that privacy, but yet they've got somebody taking care of everything. And so, while there will likely be some families in here, we see this as really addressing a different kind of a need in Madison that we can't currently address. And that's one of the reasons why we supported the townhouses in the Kaiser project ultimately. But, you know, there, we said, "No second stories," right? Because we were concerned and that was right at the beginning of the growth conversation. So, each project, we're looking at it a little differently. And the other thing that we realized is, the zoning here would allow for a four-story apartment building on this entire property. And not that we ever think, well, we got to approve this because an alternative, this could be worse, but it's bear, it was, it's worth mentioning the fact that this could be a much denser project. And so, I think that they're addressing a current market need because this type of product is making headlines across the country because you've got a younger population that doesn't have equity, that can't afford to buy a house, and yet they're not wanting to live in a three-story or four-story walk-up. And so, it's very attractive to that, the young sector as well as the older sector. And so, it's important that we, you know, not only from a public policy perspective, offer this kind of product, but when we're trying to capture people who are coming here from other locations because of all the jobs that are being created and we want people to come to Madison to shop, to attend our restaurants, we need to have housing that is attractive to them. And so, this is one way that we do it in a small way. And so, those were some of the reasons that, as staff, we supported it and we liked the fact that those units were small. As he mentioned, 86 percent of the units are not greater than 900 square feet. 900 square feet is not a very big unit. And there are a lot of one-bedroom units here. Now, you're not approving the actual site plan, right? This is just the layout amendment. But obviously, we know what they intend to do. And so, we thought that they were queuing this up as best they could. I mean, they're not going to build something that's not going to be needed by the market because that would be foolish on their part. But I think that our purposes or our goals and theirs converge. And so, that this is a product that I think that could work really well and we like the fact that it would be managed. And I think the fact that it's right next to the detached single-family or across the creek, there's the other part of Village Oakland Springs, will help to put pressure on it so that it maintains quality long-term as well as their management plan. So, those were some of our reasons for supporting it.
Could I just ask, were any of the folks who live, when you just said that about the single-family detached and how you think that that might put pressure on this other group to make it look nice? Did any notifications go out to any of the people in those neighborhoods?
Yes, layout amendments, just like preliminary plaits and final plaits, there's notice sent to all the surrounding property owners.
Okay. I didn't know, because I didn't know how far that extended, you know, like, I didn't know how far the adjacent, like, it kind of looks like there's a lot of space between the homes and that, so I didn't know if it met the threshold of having to notify those property owners, like...
Um, and I don't know how far out that notification went.
Like, do you know how many?
It's adjoining property. Do you recall, Johnny, how many were notified?
No.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Because like adjoining, I would say that's not very many. I mean, I don't know, that's why I'm asking you.
I don't know.
I know one letters went out or a hundred letters went out or do you...
I know they knew, they seemed to, because a realtor called me about this project. So, in fact, I think it's, I don't know if she works for you or whatever, but she sells your property out there. She called me and asked me what I knew about this project. It was before I even knew it was on our agenda. So, this was like a month ago.
Yeah, I don't know. I will say that any residential project gets proposed these days, we...
I know the rumor mill's going on out there, if not official.
Most of the projects that are coming forward now, there's such a demand for housing that we get calls because people want to get on a list. So, that's the calls that we get, but...
I have a different question for you, Mayor Beth. What's on the east side of this? Is it agriculture currently?
It's currently, yeah, just ag and I can't remember how far the closest house is to this, but yeah, it's just ag land.
The eventual neighborhood, I assume it's zoned to the city of Madison or...
Yeah.
What is it?
It's a big chunk of ag, yeah. And I don't recall who the owner is, but...
My only request is maybe we consider a pedestrian access somewhere there for access to the greenway if we're going to...
Well, we've got, there's, there will be the vehicle connection which would have, you know, we'd have sidewalk along that, so...
I'm thinking more in the middle of the property, some sort of pedestrian easement to the east.
Oh.
When you do the site plan, so that if that gets built out, we get some walkability to the greenway.
There's great differential between the two properties.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
See this?
No, it's on the other side.
This is a huge residential development. There's got to be, there's got to be three or 400 homes being built around here.
Oh, wow. Yeah. All right. Yeah, any other comments before we take a motion? We only need one motion, right? Okay.
(inaudible).
Roll call.
Mr. West?
Hi.
Mr. Rider?
Hi.
Mr. Booth?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. That closes the public hearing. Next item under new business, Mayor Beth, you're going to talk for a minute or two on the comprehensive plan meeting coming up? And then we'll wrap up tonight's meetings.
As you know, we're embarking on a comprehensive, an update to the comprehensive plan, comprehensive update to the comprehensive plan. And we're kicking off all of the public outreach, the first week of February. You all will have a roundtable that's for the planning commission on Tuesday evening. And on Wednesday, February 2nd, there's going to be a public workshop. It'll be here in the city council chambers. There will be an interactive mapping exercise. People will be able to do that exercise from their homes if they don't want to come to the meeting. We have a website for the project, it's MadisonOnTrack2045.com. People can get information there, they can sign up to receive emails and so forth. And again, this will be just kicking off and we'll reconvene and have some other public meetings, probably late spring, early summer.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we'll close the night's meeting. Thank you, everybody.
...to sell that land quickly. Instead, she gave us time to go and find the perfect person for that property. It took us a couple of years and working with Amy Pupori, we in turn found GBT, a developed...